Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Welcome to this remote hearing of the Licensing Subcommittee. My name is Abigail Marshall-Cuttong and I will be chairing today's hearing. Before I proceed further, could I remind everyone in today's meeting that today's meeting has been streamed live on the City Council's YouTube channel? Could I ask the following members of the Subcommittee to kindly introduce themselves? councillor Buckley?
Yes, good morning councillor Neil Buckley, All Woodley Ward.
Thank you councillor Wenham.
Good morning councillor Angela Wenham for the Roundhead Ward.
Thank you, members. I would like to start the hearing today by confirming that this meeting of the Licensing Subcommittee meets the requirements of the council's constitution, even though members of the panel are in remote attendance. While items today can be fully discussed as is usual, remote attendance requires a few slight changes as to how I will manage the debate. Therefore, can I ask all attendees to mute their microphone unless I invite you to speak? This will avoid disruption from any background noise. Can all participants please keep their cameras on during this hearing? And that is very, very important, please, I would like to emphasise that. All participants will be invited to introduce themselves at the start of the hearing to make it clear to the public observers who will be involved in today's proceedings. I ask for your assistance and your patience while I go through this process. Could I now invite officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you've introduced yourself? And I will start with Mr Brown.
Good morning, I'm Robert Brown, I'm a solicitor in Leeds City Council's Legal Services and I'm the legal advisor to the Subcommittee this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr Nelson.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you Chair. My name is Matthew, I'm part of Entertainment Licensing and today I'm supported by Emma White and Samantha Longfellow-Penega. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Booth.
Good morning, Andy Booth from Governance Services, I'll be the clerk to the Subcommittee today.
Thank you. Could I now ask the applicant or the representative to introduce themselves? Applicant?
Sorry about that. My name's Cal Richards, I'm the applicant, I'm the Vice Chairman of Drigglington Rugby League.
Any other representatives?
The side of me is Mr Peter Benson, he's the Secretary of the Club, Treasurer.
Alright, thank you very much. Over to you, Mr Booth.
Thank you Chair. Under Agenda Item 1, councillor Abigail Marshall-Cuttong was nominated as Chair for today's hearing. Can I just ask other members present to confirm that they're agreeable to this?
I agree councillor Wenham.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you. Under Agenda Item Number 2, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under Agenda Item Number 3, there's no exempt information on the agenda today. Under Agenda Item Number 4, there are no late items as such. There was some supplementary information sent in the form of an additional representation to the application. This has been sent to all parties and has been published on the council's website alongside the agenda. And moving on to Agenda Item Number 5, could I ask members if they have any disclosible pecuniary interest to declare? No, right, back to you Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Booth. So straight to Agenda Item Number 6. This is for an application for the grant of a premises licence at the Drigglington Meeting Hall. Could the legal advisor to the Subcommittee kindly outline the procedure for today's hearing, please?
Thank you councillor. Our usual procedure for this type of application is that the applicant addresses the Subcommittee first and then any other parties who have indicated an intention to speak at the hearing then address the committee and then the applicant has the chance to respond to anything said by the other parties. The representations are usually dealt with in the following order. Any responsible authority, such as the police or the fire service or environmental protection and then followed by members of the public who have submitted objections. In making its determination, the Subcommittee will consider what is appropriate and proportionate to promote the licensing objectives, namely the prevention of crime and disorder, the protection of public safety, the prevention of public nuisance and the protection of children from harm. The regulations permit the Subcommittee to set a time limit on presentations, providing the same time limit is applied to all parties. Our usual time limit is 15 minutes per party. The applicants may wish to split their allocation between their initial presentation and response to any other party, for example 10 minutes initially and 5 minutes at the end. I understand then in this case that there aren't any of the other parties present today. Can I ask Mr Richards, do you feel that 15 minutes will be sufficient for you to make your submissions?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, can I ask the Subcommittee therefore if they wish to impose a 15 minute time limit or any other different time limit?
I'm happy with a 15 minutes time limit, please.
Thank you, then a time limit of 15 minutes will apply to all presentations. I should actually ask Mr Richards, are you happy to make your submissions in one go? Or did you want to split it up to have a sort of first presentation followed by questions and then, if you like, a summing up?
Yes, please, if that's possible.
You want to do the latter, so...
The latter one.
Do you know how long you're likely to spend in each one? Because obviously you've got 15 minutes in total.
Hopefully no more than 10 minutes in my first, but...
Okay, so for the purposes of timing, then perhaps the clerk can stop you at 10 minutes? And if you still need more time, then obviously that'll lead into the remainder of the time.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. After each presentation, the Subcommittee members may wish to ask questions. The time for questions to be asked and answered is in addition to the time limit set for presentations. Cross-examination, please note that we do not permit cross-examination Subcommittee, probably doesn't apply here anyway. But if any party feels there is a crucial question that needs to be asked and answered, please do not ask the person directly, but instead make a request through the Chair who will determine whether or not the question should be put. Parties may request permission to call witnesses. Can I ask if the applicant wishes to call any witnesses today?
No, thank you.
Would you be wanting Mr Benson to speak at all?
No, no, he's fine, he's just making notes for our records, that's all.
Okay, thank you. All documents that have been submitted have been copied and circulated to the Subcommittee in advance. Can I just confirm that we all have the same original pack? It should consist of 76 pages. In addition, there should also be a four-page supplementary pack. You all got that?
Yeah.
It will be helpful when referring to documents to identify which document you're referring to by its bundle page number. Additional documents may now only be tabled with consent of all the parties. Mr Richards, do you have any other documents or items that you wish to table this morning?
No, thank you.
Please note that your presentation is your only opportunity to address the Subcommittee, so you need to make sure you included in your presentation everything that you wish to say and to have taken into account. Once you've made your presentation and after any questions, members will consider whether they have all the information they require to make a decision. Once this point is reached, members of the committee will go into a private session. If members have any additional questions to ask, they will return to the meeting to ask those questions. They will then return to private session to make their decision. Therefore, if you could please remain in the meeting until you're asked to leave. All the parties will be informed once the hearing is ended and will be advised of the decision in writing within firework in days of today. Can I ask if there are any questions or representations about the procedure we propose to follow?
No, thanks.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Brown. Right, could I now ask the Licensing Officer to kindly present the application to the hearing, please?
Yeah, of course, thank you Chair. So today, members are asked to consider an application for the grant of a premises licence made by Drigglington Rugby League Club Limited in respect of Drigglington Meeting Hall, Mollum Road, Drigglington, Bradford, BD11. The application explains that the premises comprise of a function room, a clubhouse and bar with beer garden for the community sports club, cafe and changing rooms. So in summary, the application is made for the sale by retailer of alcohol for consumption both on and off the premises, Sunday to Thursday from 10am until 11.30pm and Friday and Saturday from 10am until 1.30am the following morning. Also proposed is the performance of recorded music and live music, Sunday, Thursday from 10am till 11pm and then Friday and Saturday from 10am until 1.30pm, sorry, am the following morning. A redacted version of the application has been attached to Appendix A on page 11 of the report and additionally, the applicant has also completed the pro forma risk assessment to demonstrate the steps that they are willing to take to uphold the licensing objectives. A copy of this can be found at Appendix B on page 27 of the report. The application has attracted representation from West Yorkshire Police in their capacity as a responsible authority. A copy of the representation by the police is included at Appendix D on page 45 of the report and the representation in this instance saw further clarification of the use of the external area. In response to their representation, the applicant has supplied a revised plan that was provided to the Licensing Subcommittee members by email on the 24th of August. The new plan clearly differentiates the areas to be used for the sale, buy retail of alcohol and consumption and the external area to be used for the consumption of alcohol only. The receipt of the revised plan has resulted in West Yorkshire Police withdrawing their representation after the agenda was originally published and the matter of the police representation is no longer a matter for members' consideration. What does however remain for members' consideration is the receipt of 15 representations from residents who oppose the application largely on the grounds of public nuisance. Two of those representations received from members of the public have expressed concerns that they are at risk of retribution and their personal details have been redacted throughout the whole application process. Redacted copies of the representations can be found at Appendix E on page 55 of the report and additionally, it has become apparent that a single representation received during the consultation period was omitted from the report when it was produced and this has now been included as supplementary information for members' attention. Finally, a list of premises in the local area and their licence possibilities and ours is provided at Appendix F on page 73 of the report and that Chair is an outline of the application, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Nelson. I will now invite Mr Richards to please present your case.
Thanks very much Chair. Just doing my due service myself, my name's Cal Richards, I'm the Vice Chairman of Drigglington Rugby League Club. I've been a volunteer there for 30 years and I also have a personal licence which is what we're applying underneath. A little bit about the club's history, we were established in 1973. We're a community amateur sports club. That means constitutionally, we're not allowed to make any profit. All profits we do make is ploughed back into the sport or the building to support that sport. Currently, the start of 2020, before lockdown, we had 50 adult playing members, 185 junior members, 350 social members and roughly 80 volunteers. Obviously, the only people that get paid at the club presently are the bar manager. It takes over 200 volunteer hours a week during our clubbing season. So it's a massive undertaking on our behalf. Previously, we ran from the Drigglington Rugby League Club. We bought that building in 1997, it was an old working men's club, it had been run down. It was an old building, we totally refurbished it mainly using members' labour. Certainly Peter and I remember being up on the roof, taking the roof off, it was a hell of a day. So we've spent a lot of time and effort into that building. Unfortunately, it's an old building. It's not cost effective and there's limited ways that we can support the sport as in generating revenue. And the club's been hand to mouth for the last 10 years, it's been a struggle to stay afloat at times financially. Peter, as the treasurer, has brought down the most of that. He used to have a nice black head of hair, he's all grey now, like the rest of us. About, well, in 2011, Leeds City Council announced that they were closing the local community centre. This housed the local library and to be honest, for quite a few years, it hadn't been run particularly well because it was difficult to get bookings, there wasn't a permanent caretaker and the building was losing money. They announced that it costing £75,000 a year to run. The building was getting vandalised and they decided they were going to close it and store council records there. We then entered negotiations, so this is a long way down the road on the process. We found our first email to the council in 2011, so it's taken a long time to get to this stage. We sold our club and the council bought our club and have since sold it to a developer, we're not sure who. But every penny we made from that club has been invested into what is the meeting hall, everybody regards as the meeting hall. Basically, £210,000 we've invested in the building. Completely refurbished it and it's due to open in a couple of weeks. It has partially opened, Slimming World's club started on Tuesday this week and Women's Institute are back a week on Thursday. It's not just a rugby club, you know, our aim was we could have gone from our old club and just gone to the new building and just run it exactly the same as we have for the last 28 years. But we didn't want that, we wanted to be used as a community centre. We believe that we can run it, we will staff it, we have a business plan how to fund it and, you know, just to give you an interest, these people are absolutely committed to coming back to running from the meeting hall. So we have the local parish council, so their public meetings, their clerk will be based there, we've created an office for her. Drigglington Dollys, the Women's Institute, showed around the building last night and they're back a week on Wednesday. As I say, Slimming World has already started. The local football club has over 600 members, predominantly juniors, they have two senior teams and lots of junior teams. They're joining us, they're going to be using that as their base. We also have judo, taekwondo, yoga. A new running club is due to start soon, we're just waiting for the building to be finished and also NHS Pilates sessions will be running in there. So it isn't just a rugby club. We truly believe and want it to be part of the main hub of the community and as the building was designed to do, as a community centre. Moving on to the objections, you know, we fully understand that the residents fears. I think part of those fears come out of a perception that the building is a community centre and shouldn't be run as a pub. Unfortunately, we need to run it as a pub to generate the income to support all those other organisations. All those other organisations will pay just £10 an hour for the use of the building. A commercial rate for the function room is nearer £25 an hour. But we want to keep it cheap, so the local community, it is an asset to local communities. And I think it's the perception of, one, a rugby club and two, that the building was a community asset and it's being given to a private group of people. Or I think also that, you know, I think hopefully the panel can realise that it's not just a business to us. I think looking at the objectors, I think that when we applied for our first licence in our current premises, which was 1997, we had three local residents who were vehemently against us having a licence, even though it has been a working men's club for many years. We were in court, back then it was a little bit different, but we were in court then for four days and we had a probationary licence. This meant we had to close at half ten and it cost us a lot of money. Now, since that day that probationary licence was granted, we never had one complaint regarding licensing, not one in 28 years. The local residents, they complained about our kids and we dealt with those kids, you know, that's kids. But regarding licensing, they never had a problem, never had one complaint from those three people and they were adjacent, one was actually adjoined to the building and two others lived at the back of the building. And in all those years, we've had no police visits. Now, I know, I lived in Drigglington for 23 years and I know that we're the only ones that can say that. We ran at a very tight share. So at the end of that, you know, that process, it turned out that their fears were unfounded and we do believe that a lot of this is the same. I think once we get open, we'll be approved to these people, we can run this place and not fear nuisance to them. The systems we've put in place and the proposals will help considerably. So I think looking at the objections, they fall into two main categories. One is the fact that it's opposite the school and we fully understand that. You know, we fully understand that opposite the school, it is different to any other club in the village. The reason we wanted a 10 o'clock licence is, one, because every other pub in the village has got it and two, we've been approached by funeral directors to continue some of the funnalties that we already do in our own building. Now, if a funeral's at 11 o'clock, you need to be open it, or 10 o'clock, we need to be open at that time. We have no intention of opening at 10 o'clock every morning, we're not with the spoons, it's not what we're about. So on that, we had our meeting last night and we would be happy I think the panel can apply almost any conditions they want. If that's the case, we would be happy on a school day not to open until 3 o'clock in our licence, not have a licence till 3, unless it's for a funeral. And if that's in your powers to grant, we'd be quite happy at that. The 1.30 licence, a lot of people have said that, you know, it's in a residential area. Every pub in our village is in a residential area. Every pub in our village has a house closer than what we have. And, you know, it is a residential area, we can't move that. But compared to a lot of others, it's a lot further away from residents than some. All we want is to be able to compete in that market. So drinking time now moved later, you know, since 2005, since the licensing laws were relaxed, more people drink later. Having said that, I don't expect, we've had this licence at our own club for many years now and we virtually never open, certainly on a Friday later than 11 o'clock. But when we move, we need to be able to generate the income to support the building. When you look around the other pubs in the village, you've got two at 1 o'clock, two at half one and two at 2am. So I think, you know, we're only asking for what all the other businesses in our village, we want parity with them. If you hire a building for a function, most people now don't want to be leaving at 11 o'clock. Most people expect to be able to drink till 1am. Now, it's been said on some of the objections, it'll be two and the bar will close at 1 o'clock. We were advised to add the half an hour on for drinking uptime. We intend that the bar will shut at 11 and hopefully the building emptied by half 11 and certainly no drinks after that time. No drinks will be served after 1am. You know, in our business plan, the function room is probably the biggest thing that the village needs. There isn't anywhere in the village where you can have a private function. Even in our club, our members were allowed, we had quite a lot of functions or members were allowed to come in at the same time, which isn't ideal. But we believe as an asset to the village, it needs that function room. That late licence is critical for that function room being operational. And to be honest, that's about it, I'm happy to answer any questions. We're just trying to provide a service, yes, it's a business, but it's a business with a community base. Every penny goes back into the community in somewhere and it isn't just about rugby. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr Richard, for your very clear presentation. I will now ask members of the Subcommittee if you've got any questions for Mr Richard, please. Over to you. Yes councillor Buckley?
Yeah, thanks Chair and thanks to Mr Richards because it was a comprehensive explanation of his application and he looked very clear, so I would thank him for that. I had lots of questions written down, some of which you've already answered in your presentation. But if I can ask two or three and you've got your colleague there making notes, so perhaps if I just ask you two or three and then when I've asked them, no doubt you'll be able to deal with them. The first one was, if the application was refused, how would that affect your business plans? In the sense that you mentioned people who were hiring the rooms and so on and the presence of the parish council and so forth. But if the application was refused, how would that affect the ongoing viability of the whole project? That's the first question. Secondly, it's a pity that nobody in the objectors has seen fit to attend this virtual meeting today because one of the phrases that was written down there was this phrase, fear of reprisals. It's quite an alarming phrase and people use things like this sometimes. But I'd just like the applicant to address that and perhaps put our minds at rest there. And then finally, at the moment, capacity of the premises. I know what he said about closing the bar at 1 o'clock and that kind of thing, but I just wonder whether he could say something about the typical capacity of people in there. And I'll leave it there at the moment, thanks Chair.
Thank you. Mr Richard, are you able to answer the questions, please?
So the first one regarding if the licence would be refused. Certainly, a lot of the users that I mentioned don't need a bar. What it would impact massively is our income streams. At the moment where we are, we have the bar income and we have membership incomes. The whole reason for our move and, you know, we're struggling at that. One of the biggest reasons for taking over the meeting hall was to have that private function facility. And alongside that, we will be opening a community cafe as well. We were hoping that the local library would come back in and they've decided not to. So we had some space and we've decided that there's a need for a community cafe. So how would it impact, if we don't get a licence, it will put us out of business? Because the income that we need from the licensing is critical to support everything. It's in the business plan, it's only one part. But if we don't have that income to support the rest, the users are going to think we would have to put the price to a commercial rate for them at £25 an hour, they can afford it. So it's critical we have a licence, you know. Without it, the whole scheme doesn't work. Fear of reprisals, well, we've never intimidated anybody. Between Peter and myself, we're quite old now and we've never had any problems at all. You know, we had two, three adjacent neighbours that were vehemently against us, you know, right at the start. And they became friends, you know, we were doing things with them, if they had a problem with any kids, they'd bring us up, we'd go out and sort the kids out. People look at us and think, oh, we're a rugby club and, you know, they're just out knocking seven bells out of each other every weekend, which we do, but we have very little trouble off the field, you know, and that's what the game's about. And our game's about discipline and under no circumstances will we intimidate anybody. You know, I know personally two of the objectors, you know, and it just never entered our heads. On the third point on capacity of the building, on a normal evening, there are 20 people. When we have presentation nights, things like that, we can have 50 to 100 people. Our capacity at the old building was, Peter, 200?
200.
200, I think we had. I don't think we ever got more than about 140. Two hundred, I think we had. I don't think we ever got more than about a hundred and forty, something like that. We've, in the function room, we've invested in banqueting tables and I've bought a hundred seats. And we've got ten tables and for so, so sportsman's dinners. Um, we've got the capacity for a hundred people in the function room. Our bar area, I would think, will have a capacity of about forty. But in general, it's not, we hope it's going to be busier, we need it to be busier. You know, and that's why we're going for a normal licence rather than a clu- club licence, because the people in the village have expressed quite a lot of interest, you know, I mean, a friend of mine who some played for me for quite a few years um, never comes in our club and she can't wait to bring the dog and go for a walk and come to the new one because it's nice premises. You know, we've invested heavily. And, you know, and that's about, does that answer the question on um capacity?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr Richards. Have you got any further questions, Mr Buckley? On, on what you have?
No.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Councillor Wenham?
Uh, no questions, he's answered my questions in the presentation, so I'm quite happy with it now.
Okay, um, Mr Richards, what I would like to ask you, you know, with your ten o'clock opening, obviously being that it's very close to a school. I know you said you do not intend to open every day at ten o'clock. How many times in the week would you think you would be opening at ten o'clock?
Never, unless it's a funeral.
Unless it's a funeral.
Through the week, weekends, yeah, through the week. We're happy whenever the school's open, so that leaves us open for like Christmas or anything like that. Whenever the school's open, we're happy to not have a licence until three o'clock, as long as it is a provision that if it's a funeral, we can open. Now, yeah, we could go down the tense route of that, but looking at the amount of interest that the local funeral directors, we're likely to use all our tens up just in funerals and we don't want to be tied to that. But we we've no intention at all to open Monday to Friday at ten o'clock unless there's a funeral. But we have to put it in the application because I thought that's the only way it could be done. Now, if you guys have the power to say to us, right, you've got a three o'clock licence, but if you have a funeral, you can open at ten, I'm happy.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, that will help us in our decision making. Right, could I ask the subcommittee, have you got any further questions for Mr Richards?
Just, just one, Chair, if I can.
Yes, please.
Just to address the the whole noise issue. And people typically complain about um taxes, cars drawing up, doors being slammed and all that kind of thing.
Yeah.
And so that really is the first question, what measures are in place to mitigate that? But secondly, you have the the outdoor area where people are potentially going to be also congregating. Now, is that just a summer thing? Is that more or less an outdoor summer thing? But you can imagine people will say, well, there's going to be a lot of noise there. So what measures can you suggest could mitigate that?
Yeah. At the mo- at present, what we have and what will transfer, all our members are asked to wait inside the building until the taxis arrive. Uh, we try to have a preferred taxi service, obviously we can't dictate that. But if we are asked to ring for a taxi, we have one company that we ring and they know not to come and pack the horns and everything else. They just pull up and we we let people out as their taxi arrive. And our members are used to that. Obviously, we're not just going to have our members, so it's about education, educating the members of pub that are coming. We will, our staff are used to that system. Uh, and we have had no complaints whatsoever of our present building. That's, that works for us. Regarding the outside space, the outside, the bit, the other thing on that is apart from, the function room is at the front of the building. Our bar, which will be used every day, the function room will be used occasionally. The bar, the bar, which will be open every night, is at the back of the building, so it actually looks, looks out over the moor. So it's, it's the opposite side of the building to any residence whatsoever. So no- noise in the bar itself just won't be a problem whatsoever. Managing it as we leave, we've got systems in place. Um, the outside area, we've said we're happy for that to be licensed till ten o'clock now. So again, at a club now, everybody has to be in the club by ten o'clock so that it doesn't impact on residents. Uh, but again, the outside area is at the back of the club, actually overlooking the moor, so we don't see that as a major issue. You know, we've invested in CCTV. Um, there, there are thirteen cameras, both inside and outside, which is far more than we, we don't have CCTV at our present club. And and we've listened to what the licensing requirements are and we've done our best to fulfil that.
Okay.
Is that okay? Does that answer your question?
Excellent. Any further questions?
Uh, yes, I would like to ask a question.
Okay.
What about the live music? How long will that go on and how loud will that be?
To be honest, we didn't think we needed a licence for loud music, for for live music. It was my misunderstanding. In the last twelve months, we've had five bands on. And they, they again will run, the music will stop at one if we get granted the licence along with the bar will close. The music actually will stop, we'll probably stop the music at half twelve, shut the bar at one, everybody out by half one. But it's not massive in our um uh, our plans. We would like to put, we we want to support local artists, there's quite a few in the village. And most of the bands we do put on are local bands. Uh, but as I say, in the last twelve months, we've had five, I think. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you. Okay, any further questions, councillor Buckley?
Sure, yeah, um, you, obviously, the whole thing is is based on the community and that kind of thing. Now, just explain to us how on one hand you don't want, obviously, any under eighteen with access to alcohol. But on the other hand, you want families, presumably. So how, how will that work?
Well, in the application, there's an outside area and we believe it's absolutely fantastic for families. At the moment, our kids come and they play in the car park, which is a syndic car park. But at the, at the new building, there's a kick park to the side, there's a skate park at the back and there's all the more to play on, which won't be causing, causing any residents whatsoever a problem. Our rule is that the kids are not allowed on the front of the building, as we have now, and that will be continued. So they'll be well away from residents, et cetera. Um. We know our own kids, we know how old they are because they sign on. Um, so our, our stewardess has been with us for fifteen years, took over from me. Um, and she knows virtually every kid. We will have the challenge twenty five system in place. Um, so any kids that we don't know will be challenged. So from a, from a family environment, it'd be very, very safe. We also have two child protection officers already. Um. We, we, we are family friendly. We've only fifty adult members. But, you know, over three hundred social members, most of the social members are parents of kids that are playing. So, you know, we, we, we're all about the kids, we have kids' parties. That's what we're here for, really. The adults, they're, they're the end result, you know, this. I'm now, I'm now coaching grandkids of people that are coached.
Thank you.
Any supplementary questions, councillor Buckley? All right, councillor Wenham?
Oh, okay, no.
Thank you very much, members, and thank you very much, Mr Richards. And the subcommittee will now move into a private session to deliberate on the application. Could I ask that all parties, including the applicant and the licensing offices, remain available? Should the subcommittee have any additional questions? If there are any additional questions, you will be invited back into the meeting by the clerk, so.
So, so, Chair, ju- just, I just wanted to check that we've, you've had Mr Richards' presentation and the questions. Did he, did he want to final address to the subcommittee? Maybe he said all he needs to say, but I just wondered if he had anything further to add to sum up.
There you go, Mr Richards, you've been given some more time now from Mr Brown, if you wish to say anything further.
I think, you know, in, in, in summing up, I think I've answered most of the things that, you know, we understand the objections. Uh, the perception is it's a community asset, it has been for many years, that's what it was built for. We want to take it back to that, but we need the licence to do that. Um, we just want to be competitive with other pubs in our village, you know, we only want the same as they have got, a level playing field. Um, we have support from all the users there, over a thousand people. Uh, between all those organisations, we'll be using the ma- the meeting hall. The parish council are giving our full support. Um, they had initial fears about the one eight, one thirty AM. Once I'd explained, we had a meeting, they've given us, now given us their full support. All our ward councillors have been on the, on board since day one, since they started to close it down. They realised where we were coming from and what our aims were. We work really closely with our ward councillors, every single one of them gives us that support. And we've had twenty eight years of running a bar with no problems. We don't see why we should be penalised. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr Richards. Okay, we'll now go into the private session so you can use a few minutes to have a cup of tea whilst we are in our session now, we'll be right back. So over to you, Mr Booth.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, members, the legal officer and the clerk will now move to a breakout room for private discussion. And we'll return to the meeting once these discussions are complete. So if you can wait on the call, we'll call you back when we're ready. Thank you.
Okay. Hello? Hello? Excellent. All right. Thank you very much for your patience. Mr Richards, we just have a few clarifications we would need from yourself, so I will call on.
Sorry, Chair, we're just waiting for councillor Buckley.
Yeah, I've just noticed he's not back. Right. Sorry, Mr Richards.
No problem.
It won't be long. Our technology is feeling the weather today. So yeah, councillor Buckley's back on. Councillor Buckley, we were just telling Mr Richards that we just need to seek further clarification from him. So over to you.
Yeah, it, it was just clarification, please. In the original application, you mentioned Sunday to Thursday, 10 until 23.30, Friday to Saturday, 10 until 01.30.
Yep.
In your, in your presentation and in answer to some of our questions, you did say that your normal intention would be to effectively stop serving at, at 11 o'clock in the week and on Friday and Saturday at 1 o'clock, and that the music from bands would finish at 12.30. And we just wanted to clarify that that was your intention. So that effectively pulls back the hours by about half an hour.
Well, correct me, I'm, I'm a bit confused because originally I applied for a 1 AM licence and I was told that by the licensing officer that we would need it to, for drinking uptime, we would need to make it 1.30. So our intention was always to close at 1 o'clock, but because you've got drinking uptime, she advised us to make it 1.30. So yeah, in answer to your question, yeah, our intention is to shut the bar at 1 AM. Our intention would be to stop the music at half twelve and shut the bar at 11, so that by half eleven, the place is gone.
Is that clarifies my understanding?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councillor Wenham?
That does clarify my question, yes.
Okay, right. So thank you everyone for your patience and for attending this hearing despite the weather. So that brings us to the close of this, our business today. Mr Richards, we will be in communication with yourself. You'll receive a letter from the council in five working days. So thank you all for coming and have a lovely day. Thank you.